And start opening the meeting of the Roxbury Montpelier or Montpelier Roxbury Board of School Directors. Starting at six thirty one and let's do roll. Remick family.
Oh, no. Here. I'll fix that.
Boy, we have some some emeritus members tonight. Amanda.
Okay, here.
Jerry.
Here.
Anakin.
Here.
Mia.
Here.
Kristen.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
And Emma.
Here.
Anyone I missed? Excellent. Thank you to everyone who attended the community forum. A public comment, I can't, it looks like we definitely have some members from the public. The way we do this is there's if you hit the participants button down at the bottom of your screen, a list pops up. And in that list, there at the bottom, there's a raise hand button that you can press. If you can't figure that out, feel free to either physically raise your hand on the screen. I can see all of you. Or just take take mute off and give a shout out. Tina, see your hands up. And please introduce yourself for the orca folks.
Pardon me?
I said, please introduce yourself for the the orca folks.
Oh, Tina Muntzey, Montpelier resident. And I came today to say that I have been waiting to see an item on one of your school board agendas that would allow you to discuss the discrepancy in costs to educate a student at the Roxbury Village School compared to the rest of the schools in the district. And unless I've missed it, I haven't seen it come up. And I did notice on this agenda that it says you're discussing the May Retreat Agenda. And I had heard that perhaps you were going to begin this discussion at the May Retreat. And I just would like to ask the board to consider instead beginning this discussion at your next school board meeting. So that it's a public discussion because it seems to me if you're going to change the educational delivery system or organization of any of the schools in the district, the people in Roxbury and certainly the people in Montpelier would be interested to hear your deliberations and be able to take part. So if you weren't going to discuss it for the May Retreat, then I will ask you, please, to consider discussing it at your next school board meeting also. Thank you for considering this.
Yeah, thank you, Tina. And I do want to let people know that while we are referring to the May Retreat with the word retreat, it is not really retreat. It is a public meeting open to the public and it will be available via Zoom for anyone who wants to listen in to all or some of it. So there should be a warning of that and an agenda posted on there will be at an unusual time. It'll be during a workday.
That's what I was going to say. Is it in the evening or is it during a workday?
It's during the workday, but it should also be available for viewing later. Great. Anyone else for a public comment? Amanda?
I just want to reiterate to Tina that for your comment, and I know that this is something in your mind, and I really appreciate it. And we are hearing. And I think the conversation around, like for me, public and community input is really, really important. So I think that any conversation that we have about those big topics, we certainly, I will certainly make sure that there is a conversation around how to get public input into the conversation. So I just wanted to say that that is really important to me. How do we engage with people that care about these issues and specifically in Roxbury? So I just wanted to affirm your point that we will take that into consideration and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Jim, do you just want to provide just like a thirty second overview of what was discussed kind of a year ago on this topic? Because we were talking about a robust public process and because of the pandemic and everything going on last summer, we put this discussion on hold.
Yeah, I can give a quick overview. We before, you know, the world turned upside down. We engaged the Creative Solutions, I'm trying to figure out how to describe them, but they're they're a group that works on facilitating collaborative processes among other consulting roles to put together a community visioning processing around the district in general, but Roxbury in particular, to bring the two communities together to figure out a path forward for for that school that would be in the best interest of both communities with input from both communities. And we started out with some listening sessions. And then the pandemic hit and that worked largely good, got put on hold. So, you know, one of the things we will be discussing at the retreat and at future meetings is, you know, restarting that visioning process. And, you know, kind of what 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 we pick up a year later. So we, that's something that's, you know, was continues to be a priority. It got put on hold and we're also hoping that that process will benefit from us being able to meet in person as well. Because I think, you know, having having this in a situation where we can, you know, be in be in be in the room together as as two communities and and form the type of relationships that I think will lead to a good process forward. And also, you know, the type of relationships frankly that that were formed and I think helped with the merger in the first place, that that process of of community members from both Montpelier and Roxbury coming together and and talking these things through in a series of meetings and in person was was valuable and yeah, we will hopefully, we will pick that up again. All right, excellent. I've not seen any of their hands. So I think we can move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, thanks, Andrew. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say the the assistant principals in the consent agenda, correct, Libby?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, welcome to Jess Wells to our school district. She's someone I've known for a number of years who has taught with my wife. And I know she's very well respected in her current school district. And I'm very excited to see what she does at MSMS. So welcome, Jess.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you, Andrew. And welcome. Yeah, welcome, Jess. It's exciting to have you on board next year. Jill.
Wait, Jim, Amanda just raised her hand.
Yes, Amanda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I I think I did a mistake.
Well, you're up next for the vote, so.
Oh, yes, I'm voting on the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda.
Okay, yes.
All right, Anakin.
Hi.
Jerry.
Hi.
Mia.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Andrew.
Hi.
And Emma.
Hi.
And congrats, Libby, on your promotion. For coaching, coaching the middle school basketball.
Addict to the writing. Vaccine clinic coordinator, COVID pandemic relief, basketball coach.
And I can guess which one is your favorite? Great, board discussion. We have, I know it says Kate Stevenson, but she has recently vaccinated family in. So she is spending time with them. So Ken Jones, very kindly stepped in to give her some time with her family. And I know Ken is not only a former board member, who it's good to see again, but has been deeply involved in this project. So I will turn it over to Ken for a discussion on the district's role in Montpelier's energy audit and the agenda says Andrew LaRosa, but I'm not seeing him on the screen.
Andrew's here.
Is he? Okay. Oh, there he is. Sorry, I see him now. Okay. So Ken and Andrew.
Yeah, I'll start off. I am here representing the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee and I am a a poor substitute for Kate. Kate's been incredibly effective at leading that organization for the last few years. She has, now it's Amy Gamble, just so you know, who is the Chair of the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee. We were, we were formed as the Montpelier Energy Team many, many years ago, probably somewhere in the fifteen to eighteen years ago. But it was in two thousand eleven that the city provided us or it was, we have a charter with city council to provide advice on energy issues. And in two thousand eleven, that was around the district heat plant. And since then, we've helped facilitate the construction of the two solar fields, one on Log Road, which is in Montpelier and the other is in Sharon. And together, that's a megawatt of solar and the school district participates in the use of that. It's a net metering project. So you folks get a little bit of an economic or we, we, the subset school, we gets a an economic benefit from participating in that solar project. Another one of the big projects underway now is the the renovation of the wastewater treatment plant, which just recently has geared up so that it now takes additional fog, which is fats, oils and grease, and makes a lot of methane. And we're hoping that so that that's in place. And that methane is used to substitute for all of the fossil fuel use at the plant and then some. And it's the end then some that we hope we are able to generate some electricity. That decision probably is going to be made in the next few months. But the reason for my being here tonight is to talk about our overall goal for the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee and the city, the city council has agreed to this, which is to be by twenty thirty to have a hundred percent of our energy resources be renewable. And that's of course quite a challenge, but we've made great steps. And we would very much hope that the schools can participate in that discussion and the decisions necessary to move that forward as well. So I have some slides and other, I don't know if I have the ability to share my screen.
Yes, you do, Ken. You can share your screen.
Where it says share screen, you think that they might do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, be a good place to start.
Yes, and I'll start there. So part this, this is just to give us a little bit of history because I need to acknowledge that the schools have done a great job in terms of energy. But this is the overall, this includes schools. This is the overall energy use by the city of Montpelier. And you can see it's in those essentially three categories where we'll start at the bottom and the bottom, that orange part is electricity. And you'll see there's been some significant decreases there. The fleet, which includes a lot of the municipal vehicles, I don't know if it includes the school buses. It may or may not, I don't know. And then blue is thermal. So that's the use of fuel, oil, propane to heat our buildings and it includes the wood of the district heat plant. So this is total use and it's not broken down yet by fuels. So this then identifies the where the energy is being used again in terms of those three categories. And you can see the schools is there to the right where the big one, this is why I don't think it includes school buses because there's no little gray bar. But you can see there's electricity use and the thermal, the heating of your buildings, the large buildings. And you can see the wastewater treatment plant, that's, I think WRRF is Water Resource Recovery Facility. And that's history or fiscal twenty. And the thermal part of that will is being addressed again through this methane generation. So what you saw there, just in a different form, the terms of energy use, and this is on a sort of BTU basis, you know, electricity represents less than a quarter, it's the thermal, it's the big piece. And then here's, as I say, this is some evidence that there has been some great progress. So this is electricity use over the last ten years. And you can see that the, let's say, the height, all the schools have seen significant reduction. And I've lost track of what some of those were. I think there were a lot of control systems put into place. Certainly lighting, but maybe some of you folks know even more of the details as to what was the the basis of some of those reductions. But that's great. And but but also you should know that electricity in the state has made some great progress in terms of of climate issues, electricity in Vermont is pretty clean. I'm not going to say it's perfect and hopefully it gets better over time. But electricity, we've done a great job, both in terms of the efficient use of electricity, but also in our electricity supplies. So that it is not the, does not provide the lion's share of contribution to greenhouse gas emissions. And then this tells the the solar story where sixteen fiscal sixteen and seventeen, we brought on the Sharon and Log Road plants. So that even even that reduced use of electricity, we have a significant portion that's that is at home renewable. The the blue is still, you know, the state, state's use of ISO New England sources still has a lot of renewable in it. But the green part is ours. That's the part that Montpelier is taking responsibility for doing its own generation. Hey, Ken, I'm just gonna, Ken, can I jump back in on that one? I don't want to disturb your thing. Just want to let folks know by the end of next year, that should be a hundred percent. Where we've got net metering accounts now for Main Street, Middle and Roxbury. And those facilities are just being ramped up now. So they should be fully online by the end of twenty one. So that solar force should be a hundred percent by the end of the year. Yeah, and yeah, a big pat on the back. I mean, you guys are doing great. And I'm proud of the little role that I played when I was on the board to kind of encourage this, but you folks are really following through. And we all thank you, the world thanks you. And then here's thermal, where you can see I, Union Elementary had a significant period where there was, where we did some renovation work and saw some significant reductions in the overall thermal load. This isn't, this isn't, again, looking at the energy sources, this is just what it takes to heat that building. And, you know, especially Union and Main Street being older buildings, it's it's some challenges to to heat those buildings. They weren't designed necessarily for heating efficiency in mind. The high, high school is a little more recent and so it's a little harder to get those gains. But still, you can see here the trajectory, we saw some significant improvements at Union and some improvements both at the high school and at Main Street. And this then looks at the source of that thermal heat. And this is, this is the story of the of the district heat plant. The district heat plant is a wood fired plant. It is, it connects to Union Elementary. So as we brought that online, fully online by fiscal fifteen, you can see that that portion of the thermal load is being addressed by renewable sources. So so that's the, that's, that's our history. And again, what we at Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee and City Council has signed on to, we want to aim for twenty thirty. We want to get all of these, both the electricity bar and the thermal bars to be renewable. And the piece again that I haven't included, which is an important discussion as well, is transportation. And we, pardon, we, we haven't had a lot of success at the city level. But it is going to be a focus as we move forward. The availability of vehicles, especially large vehicles for renewable fuels is harder. But 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 I don't, don't want to think that we've forgotten it because you know, it's a, it's a significant part of the energy use. And we need to look at some creative solutions for providing renewable sources for transportation as well. So for a little while, we've been having discussion with the superintendent and with some of the leadership of the board about what you folks can do. And I know the students have also stepped up to say, you know, what, what can you, how can we formalize? How can you formalize the actions of moving towards a more renewable energy future? And we have, you know, a couple of ideas that we're moving forward on. One is we want to have a student on the Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee. And I'm working with some folks in the district to help identify that student. Another is for you folks to have the the discussion about signing on to or having your own version of a long term goal for renewable energy use for reduction of greenhouse gases. And the third, which we're making some good progress on, is just to make sure that we can maintain the communication. So and especially, you know, this year, there's some, there's some resources out there. We all know there's federal resources that the state is distributing to do, to take on some activities to help make for a more resilient future, which largely, which can address some of these energy issues. So again, we want the city to work with the schools to say, hey, there's some opportunities here. Can we work together on some of these? How, what is our progress towards the goals? So again, that's my purpose tonight is just kind of tee this up to to get you folks to to identify what it is that you can do to continue this discussion and strive towards some policy goals that help us achieve a cleaner energy future.
So, Ken, this is, this is Andrew. I just want to chime in here. Just so you know, a couple of meetings ago, the board referred this issue to the Policy Committee, which is going to be meeting after our retreat next month. We have a bunch of, we're just wrapping up negotiations with every one of our labor unions, wrapping up SRO work and a bunch of other time intensive work. But this is, this is an important issue to the board. So it has been referred to the Policy Committee. We also created a facilities and energy committee that's going to also begin meeting this summer as well, which will meet with the Student Earth Group, as well as we'll have a representative who will be a liaison with the city's Energy Committee as well. And Andrew, I know, is also, I'll kick it to Andrew, but I also know that, you know, we want to be involved in the energy audit. That's going to be really helpful the administration and also to the board making decisions moving forward.
Yeah, I did forget to mention that piece, right? We we've hired VEIC to help us look at each of the buildings to identify sort of a menu of activities that can help move each of those buildings to a more renewable sort of 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 thermal fuels. And yeah, and we're working with the schools on that and that's great.
Excellent. Andrew, do you want to add anything or should we open up questions?
No, I mean, I think that I'm, you know, I'm excited for whatever direction I'm given to take with the buildings and the goals that you want to achieve. I look forward to continuing. We've had some communications with VEIC regarding our energy usage so far, primarily around transportation at the moment so far. And it'll be great to get that report to see what their suggestions are or what their, you know, their ideas are on on meeting that goal. And I think that's a document that we should all read and digest to see what we're up, you know, the challenges and opportunities that we're facing us before we make any, you know, too many bold grand gestures to wait up, to wait a month or two. Because if I understand correctly, that report's due in June, correct? I believe so. June or July. Yeah, so we're pretty close to getting that report. So I think that the timing seems to all be falling in line.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Andrew.
I mean, if you, if you'd like, just for your own knowledge, I can tell you a little bit about some of the energy things we've been doing and we've been looking at. If anyone wants that, or if we want to wait until that group is is formed, then we can formalize these sort of, give a more formal presentation in a month or two.
I wouldn't mind a quick preview. I don't have to get into detail, but.
Yeah, so some of the quick things, like I said, the net metering, we've got all the buildings are all lined up. Should by by the end of next, by the end of this year, everything should be fully in line. That the indoor air quality grant did a, was a great opportunity. We spent nearly a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on our mechanical systems. Having a contractor or go through them all and our controls contractor and our engineer. We were fortunate that we had our buildings commissioned, retro commissioned by Efficiency Vermont last, last fall. So when it came to doing these indoor air quality work, we had a running start at it. Everybody had been in our buildings, which was great. Energy, one of the biggest things we've got is not only where the energy is generated, but how it's used and the buildings used in. We are doing our beta tests on window renovation and replacement and or replacement. This summer, we've got the contractors lined up. I have, we're waiting to get the final pricing on a couple of mock up windows that we should have at the end of the week. Got a contractor online. So by the end of summer, by August thirteenth, we will have a sample windows for a group, whatever that group is, to go in and look at and open and close and shut and see what, see what we can think is the right solution, as well as having a better cost estimate and timelines available to us to look at. One of the things that Grant put in front of you guys a couple of meetings ago, a few meetings ago, I guess, with regards to some fund balance was looking at variable frequency drive pumps at the high school. These are the big circulator pumps that move water throughout. Right now, they're on or they're off. Our engineers specifying eight new pumps that will cycle up and cycle down and they'll be high efficiency. And that's going to save a tremendous amount of money. And I will have, I think I'll have some final like estimates of what the savings will be. Those reports are, the final reports are due to me this week. They've been kind of busy. I told them it's okay, they can wait another week. So that we'll have that information. We should have those, we will have those in place for the next heating season. The Roxbury heat pump project, that one's kind of, you know, it's unfortunate. We don't have like a clear winner, you know, there's, there's, we can do something that's relatively simple and easy and kind of right off the shelf. And will it be as high performing and as all encompassing as a more comprehensive project? No. But can we get our hands around it and operate it very simply and get it going right this summer without rebuilding a mechanical system that you don't know what you're getting into? Yes. So that's a conversation. When I get the formal report on that, I'll have a bill to speak to that. But unfortunately, a sort of a clear winner did not jump out of that one. And the controls, our controls contractor, current controls contractor and our engineers have got a very good handle on two different scopes at the high school. One is replace our, replace our interface, our computer programming and rewire to old controls, add CO2 sensors in the classrooms and then phase in kind of controlling or replacing the actual little motors on the dampers and things like that over a rollout period or doing it all at once and hitting it all at once. That's going to be huge in that it won't save us energy. It it'll save us energy in that right now, Tom, sort of Tom Allen, sort of back doors a few things, the control. right now, Tom, sort of Tom Allen, sort of back doors a few things, the control system at the high school is relatively old. So he has to kind of trick some things to do thing, something. So we'll have a better handle on that. Uh, but in fact, we'll bring, we'll be bringing more fresh air into our buildings. So that's a good thing. So we'll, we'll, we'll use more energy, but we'll use it wisely. And we'll get more fresh air into the building. So, um, like I say, that's getting formalized and that one, we really just have to we'll have a cost estimate on that. It's clearly an estimate, but it should get us in the ballpark and we can start thinking about what's the best way to attack that. Um, and again, one of the things I think is the most important is that we've, we've reestablished a, a controls or a, uh, mechanical service plan with a very good firm with Honeywell and even better, uh, the individual who services our building really enjoys working in our, in our buildings, enjoys working in schools, um, and has done a fabulous job for us and, and, uh, will continue. That's already built into our budget. So it's, you know, we've got twenty five thousand dollars worth of service on our mechanical systems next year. So there's never a sort of, eh, let's wait until, you know, let's wait until the spring. It's like, if it needs to be done, it's going to be done. So, big picture, that's some of the things that we've been working on.
Awesome. That was super helpful. Uh, questions for, um, for Ken or Andrew?
Thanks, Jim. Um, thank you for the, thank you, Ken and Andrew for, for walking us through all that. It was extremely helpful. Um, and Andrew, you went into the, the Roxbury, um, items and things. Uh, one thing I was wondering, um, with the presentation, we, I, we got to see the comparison between the different schools, but Roxbury wasn't in the mix unless I missed it. Um, and I was just, just curious where that fits in.
Yeah. From a Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee perspective, you're right. That, that's, that's something that, that, um, it, it's not in our arena. Okay. We, we, we aren't a part of the school district. So we're therefore not a part of Mon, of Roxbury. Um, so that's as, as we move forward, how to integrate the Roxbury schools into the overall discussion is something we were going to need to discuss. Should in our report that we get from, um, our engineers, should, we should have a, um, a pretty good handle on if we go to heat pumps, how much oil are we going to save versus electricity and, and, and how that would, so we can, we can, we'll at least be able to see our, we're going to be able to do better in that building.
Uh, Andrew. On, on that last point, I just wanted to clarify. So the, uh, the facilities and energy committee does have a representative from Roxbury on it. And the intention is certainly to incorporate Roxbury into this discussion. Definitely at the school level, but that building also plays a key role for the municipality of Roxbury as well. I know that's where town meetings. Um, so, yeah, and, and just so everybody else here is aware, since we've had for the past, the past two meetings and then this meeting, that's three meetings in a row where facilities and energy has been front and center on the agenda. Our crew decided that we were going to wait, uh, until after we got through this period to convene for the first time. So we will be doing that at some point and probably May or June for the first time.
Thanks, Andrew. Um, other questions? Great. I have one. I noticed in the presentation that, um, kind of citywide, there was a gradual, um, reduction in the use in pretty much all energy sectors. Um, what's driving that? Is it all efficiency or are there other factors at play?
It's mostly efficiency. Uh, so we, we've, uh, we've also established a revolving loan fund, um, within the city to, to provide some resources to the various departments so that they can invest in, in buildings. Um, we've done the, we've done renovations of the windows at city hall. We've worked on the garage doors at the fire and police station, the fire and police station had some control issues. And the wastewater treatment plants, the largest user of energy and, and we've already put some significant effort there. So it, it is, uh, yeah, I don't know if there's a a way of measure, uh, of measuring sort of municipal activity to see if there's a, a change in municipal activity that may have led to. But I don't, I don't think there has been. Uh, we haven't changed the number of buildings, um, the wastewater treatment, water treatment and the drinking water facility are pretty constant in terms of their utilization. Um, so efficiency.
Uh, I also noticed, and this is kind of a question for Andrew also, that all the trends on thoroughly use in this, the three schools were down, um, kind of overall, but I noticed M H S had kind of seemed to plateau and pick up again. Do you know what the cause of that is?
Um, which slot, were you talking with regards to electricity or?
Thermal.
So one of the tough things, tough, difficult things about that is these calculations, thermal usage is based on fuel delivery and when you get it, we, um, sign up for oil contracts. I've already bought next year's oil. And what we do is depending on where we are and, and like Tom and I just this week said, how much oil is in our tank? Do we fill them up? So we start the next year full. So it's sort of, you can kind of, you, you know, you gotta look at it as a long, long, you know, year to year, it's a little tougher to say, are we doing better or worse? Because it really, did we start with a full tank of gas, uh, gas, full tank of oil? Or did we have to load up with? Um, you know, an extra ten thousand at the beginning of the year. So I would be careful about sort of year to year on, on oil usage. Cause that one or two deliveries can, can kind of throw that. I think, Ken, does that seem, that's?
Yes, that is true. There, there was a bump in particular that I was sure was a delivery scheduling piece. And, and then, you know, the, the, the year to year changes are also influenced by degree days, you know? Twenty sixteen was a warm year, so things go down and there's going to be a rebound the next year. But yeah, also it is, that is based on delivery dates and that is yeah, hard to normalize.
You could use a moving, you could use a moving five-year average or something like that.
Last year, at this, at this time, you guys probably would have wanted me to pick up the phone. We bought heating oil for ninety eight cents a gallon. So we didn't, we, you know, we were done with our heating season, but they picked up the phone and said, you want ten thousand gallons for ten thousand dollars? And we said, yep. We'll top off our tanks. So.
Yeah, no, definitely. And the, the trend is, is, is definitely, um, downward. Uh, Kristen is, Kristen.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Andrew. Um, I was hoping to get a little bit more information about the V E I C. Um, process and the, the, you know, report that would be the outcome of that and curious if it involves analysis only, or if it will also include recommendations and just what we can expect to see come out of that. And I was wondering if that was something that was generated by the city. Is it going to include? And it's kind of been extended to the school district and, um, and if it is going to include the Roxbury school, I happen to be the Roxbury member that will be on the buildings and, or the facilities and energy committee. So I'm interested to hear about that.
Yeah. Uh, so I'll try to characterize their work. It is essentially a multi-building audit to identify the status of the buildings and to identify the strategies necessary to replace the existing use of fossil fuel. So rec, I mean, it's going to be a list of actions and, um, I, I'm not sure if the word recommendation will be in there or not. Um, because the, the extent to which we look at cost effectiveness, um, is going to be after, after that work and how we can fund the things, the source of the funds for it. Um, and it is my understanding that does not include the Roxbury. Uh, again, we started as Montpelier Energy Advisory Committee, um, to deal with Montpelier. And it, and it will include the Montpelier schools, but right now I don't believe, and Andrew might know, but I don't believe it's going to include the Roxbury. It, it does not, um, like I said, just, but I can, uh, Kristen, I can get you the, you know, if, if you, you want to build your knowledge base of the Roxbury mechanical systems, uh, I'm happy to give you a tour. But, um, we also have the retro commissioning report that was done last year that kind of talks about the pros and cons and the good things and the bad things, as well as this additional, um, you know, report that we're going to get on heat pumps and all that. So we do, it's not on an island all by itself without any connection. It just wasn't part of the scope when the city put out that R F P. But we, like I say, we have, um, we have done those. We did not, uh, we, we changed that. Let me, let me, let me rethink about that. Because of the size, actually, we had, we had, uh, our engineers audit the building. It was not part of an efficiency Vermont retro commissioning. I believe because of the size, it was just, it was, didn't really fit into that retro commissioning, um, uh, program that they had where they go in and tour the buildings and, and, you know, poke and prod and take readings and stuff. In the Roxbury did not receive that because again, the size of the building did not qualify for that. But our, our engineers went through and did do a report. So I can, I can share that with you.
Great. Uh, other questions? Well, uh, thank you so much, Ken and Andrew. This is, uh, super helpful and, you know, obviously an ongoing discussion that, that, uh, you know, the board is going to delve into more deeply. And, you know, as Andrew kind of stated, the, um, you know, what we've decided on, uh, after the students presented. Uh, yeah, and it's good, it's good to see the progress that's been made. Uh, you know, thank you, Andrew, and then all of the, the facilities. Um, folks who've, who, who contributed to that, uh, and, you know, with, I think, an infusion of some federal money that, that has come upon us. I think we'll have the opportunity to accelerate some of the progress in the next, um, you know, few years, uh, and build on that. So, so thank you. Um, uh, the next item in the board discussion is fundraising policy. Oh, um, was that a hand, Andrew? Or are you just waving? All right. Is the fundraising policy, um, this came out of a, uh, an issue that, that came up a couple of years ago that the policy committee had been pursuing. Um, I'm not sure what exactly we need to do on this event, other than kind of give an update. I think, uh, there had been a placeholder, uh, for this discussion, uh, a while back. Um, so I don't know. I know we've got a, a re, um, reconstituted policy committee, um, of which I am a member, uh, a new member. Um, but I'm not sure.
And yeah, before Ryan left the board, he had asked to put this on the agenda in the spring for, um, to, for the board to decide if they wanted the policy committee to take this up again or not.
Well, I can, I can say that we talked about it, um, before Ryan left and there are expenses. Now, he also, um, and Emma can, can also jump in, um, but he did write a memo, uh, so that there are two possible ways of going about this. So there is a memo that I consider, I think so. Because it wasn't in the agenda. Um, I think like, maybe we can talk about it next time. But there is already a process in place, um, that Ryan, Emma and I talked about. Um, and there's a memo about it, about how to, like, what kind of decisions we also, but basically there are two ways um, to go about this conversation. One will be creating a policy. Um, there are, we have some resources, including, uh, the U E S committee, uh, and the U S Caregivers Alliance created, um, sort of like a, a, a pretty focused, uh, document that lays out some of this, this fundraising conversations about, you know, what to think about when doing fundraisers within the U S caregivers group. So I think there is, and, and there was extensive conversations that they, that Ryan and I don't know, Emma, if you were there, um, had with the principals and the M R S P pie last year as well. So basically, to make this very short, there are notes, there is a memo, but we shouldn't disclose it today because nobody had the chance to read it. And so I can, uh, put it out in document and send it for the next school board meeting.
I wonder, should the new policy committee maybe take this up? And I, I see you, is your counsel, Jill, or did you take it down? No. Um, would that be another avenue? Just to have the new policy committee take a, a quick look at this and, um, then come back.
I, I feel like there's, uh, sure, but it's work that was already done. I think it's like, yes.
It's really, I don't know, it might, it might just be easier to give it straight to the board. Um, Jill?
Emma. I changed my mind. I, I appreciate Amanda giving the update because I, I remember being a parent that was really concerned before I was a school board member about a particular fundraiser that I felt was really, um, inappropriate in the, the sort of guilt for a bit late on our kids for raising money for certain field trips. And the message that sends to students who may not have the means to participate in the fundraiser safely. So I'm really glad to hear that there's been work done that, on that. And I do think that the caregivers alliance and the, um, parents group seems like they're really, um, have made a lot of progress in the last year or so to sort of facilitate those. I think in this case it was, uh, in the case that I experienced, it was not even really through the parents group. It was just a direct to the school fundraiser. Um, so I'd be happy to help if there's something I need to help, but it does sound like there's been a ton of work done already. And I, I definitely do think that once we're on the other end of COVID and kids are back in person, that I think it'd be helpful for the board to be really clear. You know, where, where it's appropriate for our role to, um, set expectations about what is and isn't asked of our students for fundraising.
Good. Thanks, Jill. Uh, Emma.
Yeah, I'll just sort of chime in with Amanda's, uh, update from the policy committee. So Bridget, um, who is a lawyer and a former, uh, board member, she had spent a, a long time, many months, um, researching what a policy would look like at the district level. And trying to draft something that was appropriate, sort of where does the district, you know, where does the board's policy arm, where is it sort of an overreach, um, you know, and that sort of thing. So it became so much more complicated. This is the report back to me from Bridget through Ryan. That the whole process became a lot more complicated than you would think at first blush. Um, trying to write a district policy around fundraising that would, you know, um, basically it sounded like legally, we don't have control over parents group fundraising, um, activities. And, you know, I, I'm not going to get into the history too much, but I think that I know the fundraising, um, gift card thing that you're talking about Jill at the middle school, and I believe it actually was a parents group fundraiser. But they were providing, you know, school time to promote the fundraiser. Anyway, it just gets very complicated. So we can control what the school does and we can make uh, a policy to, um, you know, control sort of what the school is allowed to do around fundraisers. Uh, this is what I understand anyway, and I didn't review, I wish I had reviewed the memo before coming tonight, but, um, but, but, uh, and then we can make recommendations to the parents groups. But there's been a lot of work done, um, like maybe almost two years worth of work done on the fundraising, on the drafting, a first draft of a fundraising policy, and we still don't have it. And when Ryan, uh, left, it sort of fizzled out. So I think Jim's right that it's, um, probably time to revisit all of those notes and see where it stands. I think we're pretty close to having a draft, but every time we sort of dug into it and started talking about it, um, layers of complexity arose. So that's, that's where we were at last I checked.
Amanda?
Yeah, I'll just add, so just because I reviewed the memo this morning, um, when I saw that, that was what it was. So basically our path forward is as that there are two primary ways to do this. One is creating a consulting with a legal team. So both the Vermont School Board Association basically say there's there is no real fundraising policy that it, it's good, you could, you could do, do luck with that. Because there, there's a lot of layers and it's very complex. So they said, yeah, like the South Burlington School District has like a fundraising policy that is like very detailed. Um, so that is one way to do it, to consult a legal team, to do a comprehensive policy that would clearly articulate what would happen in the district related to any fundraising activities. And then the other alternative is that the board could do a global statement, um, in like of intent regarding fundraising. activities that leaves most of the decisions, uh, for the administrators of each of the school district. And then, um, and, and so then we have, you know, that stakeholder participation and inclusion in the process of drafting, drafting the framework itself will be taken into account. And then, um, you know, we, we have the reference of the U E S equity, um, event policy, which is what the U E S caregivers alliance created. And then the South Burlington poli- policy, which is like hand in hand. So those are kind of the two ways, um, to go about. And, um, and so there is that, that memo, I think that so for next steps, I would, my suggestion is that I just make this into a document, send it to the board for our next school board meeting. And then, um, kind of going that decision, then it will fall into the policy committee if we decide to gather that policy is the way forward. So.
So where should we, should we have the policy committee, can we take it up or?
My suggestion is that I just send this document of the work that was already done to this full board to have in the next school board meeting. And then if the full board, after that discussion decides that policy is the way forward, that then the policy committee.
All right. Good. Thanks for clarifying. Um, Mia? Or you're, yeah, I don't know. Does that make sense to everyone? Right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda. Anything further on fundraising or can we just do a quick overview of retreat planning? Uh, great order retreat planning. So I've talked to, I believe, everyone, um, just kind of generally about the retreat. Uh, would just love to kind of get some thoughts about how I'm thinking. We've got two days. Uh, I was thinking of taking one day and just talking about kind of, you know, the, the board uh, as a cohesive unit. Um, you know, we've got a lot of new members. Uh, unfortunately, most of our time has been virtually instead of in person. So, uh, I was thinking about potentially getting, uh, a facilitator to just talk through, you know, our, our board roles, uh, board expectations. Also just how to, you know, build a really collaborative, you know, process, uh, where we build trust, where we can, you know, disagree and, and have, uh, and have robust conversations in a, you know, constructive, respectful manner. Just getting, you know, just getting a real sense of kind of what this new board wants to be, how it wants to operate. You know, the expectations around it, et cetera. And then using the second day, uh, to kind of hone in on some, uh, priorities for the coming year. Uh, and I also think part of the first day is just talking about how we, we kind of focus as well because I think we've got a lot of big ideas and, and the district has a lot of, of challenges and opportunities. Uh, and then using the second day, uh, to focus in on kind of a work plan for the coming year. Uh, some of the things we want to work on, uh, how that might build with, uh, a longer term vision of, of priorities and things, um, that we want to advance in the district. And I think for two days, that's more than, more than plenty. So I just wanted to kind of give thoughts if that all seemed to make sense. I've been talking to a few of you about potential, uh, facilitators for that first day. Uh, I think there's a consensus building, one that I definitely share, uh, that while the V S B A has provided us some nice information, that we want a facilitator that I think is going to be more, um, in tune to, um, to kind of our unique challenges. And I think also some of the, the vision to be a, a board that's, uh, maybe a little less traditional than, uh, kind of the V S B A model and get a facilitator that can, can speak to that and, and plug into that energy. But, you know, definitely further suggestions for members about, about who might be, might be good in that role would be fantastic because we don't have a ton of time to, to kind of reach out and, and get someone down. So we'd just love to open it up to, to kind of any thoughts, uh, about whether that general structure makes sense. Uh, and then as, you know, if, if it does, as we kind of get more details, we can, uh, you know, fill in at the next, the next meeting or two. Well, we don't have that many meetings, so. Yeah. So just want to open it up from there. Uh, Mia?
Uh, I had a couple of visitors, so I just want to make sure I heard correctly and I understand. The, um, the first day is focused more on really just building relationships among the board and, you know, getting to know each other a little better. And then the second day, we'd end with, um, perhaps some goals set for the year?
Some, some kind of like priorities and, and work plans. I see Tina looking, my guess is Roxbury will probably be one of those, but I think, uh, setting a, a couple, a couple more to, you know, just to focus us because, you know, the year can go quickly and, um, you know, said, it's kind of setting priorities. Obviously other things will come up, but kind of like what, what do we want to accomplish this year? You know, I think framed out a little and, uh, you know, some, some other priorities too, and kind of like how we might want to stage, uh, you know, stage, stage priorities and stage initiatives.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. I, I, um, I think with three hours on day two, it would be hard to come up with like real plans, but I think prioritizing, prioritizing our priorities. Sorry, I can't think of a better word than that, but thinking about like, what is it that we want to be or what accomplished by the end of the year? Um, and get very clear about that, um, feels both very good and doable with three hours on day two.
Yeah, that's why I hope to, um, Amanda?
I hate to be negative, but I just, uh, think that we need more, a little more time to like, you know, like, I don't think three hours is enough, um, to have these deep conversations. But, um, I think that maybe if we could do some pre-work, I think in terms of transparency, like I, I think coming into the retreat is like really thinking about what is everybody thinking so that everybody can have their thought organized. I think we, we, uh, and, and so, and I'm willing to support in doing a survey that, you know, we can compile around big ideas, little ideas, and, and so that before the retreat, we really have a sense of a global picture so that it's easier to dissect, um, a, a, and that we can all kind of be transparent, looking at what, like, what those ideas look like. Because this is also like a three-year period. So you, you know, I, I would see, I would, I couldn't envision a like thinking that way as well as like, you know, here's a long-term vision. Here's like what we can do in year one, year two, and year three as well, um, so that you can spread, we can spread our brains a little more. So when you try to focus just one year, then like you have all these things that, uh, might be left, so.
Yeah, no, no, absolutely. Um, and I did have conversations with all of you kind of about those parties, kind of get people thinking in that perspective. And I can, I can kind of, you know, summarize those and send them around before, uh, the next meeting and maybe, um, you know, if others try to figure out how to, to do this without tripping open meeting laws. Uh, but maybe I can summarize it, I admit, and then we can spend a little time at the next meeting after the, the S R O presentation, just kind of talking through that. But I, I totally agree that, that giving a lot of thought to this beforehand is going to make it, make it go better. And, and also, you know, this is, I, I see the retreat as the beginning of a discussion, not the end. I kind of agree with Mia that we can, you know, find some points in the distance we want to head to, um, and then, you know, map that out a little more clearly as, as we move forward. Mia, again?
I, I just wanted to co-sign Amanda's point about pre, um, pre-work for us to do bef- before we get there. And, um, I think the, the work that you've done, Jim, to hear from each one of us is really good. And I also think about like, how do we, how do we think of ourselves or how do we act in this moment as the, in, in one of our roles being sort of like the representations of the community? And how can we have community voice in, um, in also thinking about what those priorities ought to be? So I don't know if, you know, Amanda's idea of the survey goes more community-wide or we look at, um, you know, Libby's just begun surveying the community around specifically, how could we use those S R funds? But are there ideas that have come up through that that don't necessarily fall into the category of money or, you know, but, but are really great ideas that we could bring into this conversation? So I wonder how we can get a broader perspective before we show up for, for those three hours. Is, I don't have any answers for that, but I, I would definitely want to encourage us to, to think about those, you know, what are the ways to do that? And then the other thing goes, I, I forgot to mention for day one, maybe this is doing too much, but in addition to the relationship building, um, and I think you were kind of getting at this, Jim. And so if you were, then I'm just kind of plus wanting to that is, um, ending the day with some agreements for, and sort of norms and procedures and how, how we will all work together as a board in order to accomplish whatever we're going to determine the next day are our priorities, um, I think would be really helpful.
Absolutely. Uh, are there, uh, questions or comments? Jill?
Yeah, I, I, I actually really like Amanda's idea of having us do some pre-work. I had, it was really great to have that conversation with you, Jim, and, and I had prepared for it and I like put some sort of thought into the things I want to make sure I said, but I don't have that level of understanding of what other folks' priorities are. And I think it'd be kind of neat to hear, especially if there's some consensus in some of those pieces. And I think the structure you've talked about in the tree, I do think we need to just take that time in that first day to set up some norms and some common expectations and get to know each other that way. I think that would go along, I, because I feel like we've all just been, um, through this, you know, really intense period where it was really clear what the priorities were. And thankfully, our administration and our teachers have carried us through that. And now we have the luxury of being able to look ahead at what we want to do and maybe even some federal dollars to do it with. So I, I, I really like that idea of having that kind of pre-work done and also, um, having the space to get to know each other because things will continue to come up. Um, and we have a lot of priorities and a lot of possible work in this coming year or so. And, um, I think it's great timing. So I'm willing to do whatever needs to be done beforehand so we can make the best use of, of that time because it will go by really quickly.
Yes, no, absolutely. Um, and I, I definitely agree on, um, getting kind of those priorities out. And I'll, I'll try to put together some sort of document and I'll talk to Libby about how best to kind of get some of those, those ideas because, because there was, um, yeah, there was, there was overlap and there was divergence. Um, Jerry?
We did start the survey process in Roxbury. So you might want to reach out. I don't know if Libby has those or, or if they're still with the principal, but I believe we have at least a subset of data from the community members. So we could just use that as a data point.
Great. Thanks, Jerry. Uh, Andrew?
Yeah. So I'm just thinking about how we take this suggestion of doing pre-work and turn it into action. And my inclination normally is to like, you know, set up, set up a little group and people can collaborate. And, you know, we wouldn't need to have like, part, part of I think what makes this so difficult is we're constantly trying and, and we're doing a good job, um, to avoid open meeting law violations. But that then means we're not able to collaborate unless we're here in this space, which is very limiting. And I think that's impacting our ability to communicate in many ways. So I'm just thinking about, you know, how are we, how do we want to go? I, I can think of many organic processes that I'd use in the workplace to, uh, figure out a path forward on pre-work and, and have it, have it, have it evolved that way. But how do we want to do this so that we can focus ourselves and, and not break the open meeting law here? And, uh, essentially get from A to B. That's my question for our group.
Uh, Amanda?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think there are ways, there's no violation of a meeting law, everything's transparent, open, and you have like a meeting that you have. But if we're thinking about hiring a facilitator, um, that, that is, it, that could be another way that we say, here facilitator, we want to make sure that here are some things, we want to know where everybody's at and do some pre-work, can you facilitate that process? And then that person can, can do that, like, you know, that is, is one thing that could be done. And, um, create a discourse, which is who did the Monphilia Roxbury focus groups and who supported the, the, a school safety committee, you know, is one that I, you know, that already kind of knows what's happening in the community and that could kind of already has some idea, I would think, around what's happening in our district. And, and so I, I, I mean, I, I think I just want to offer that we do have some expertise in here in the school board of people that kind of like do this too, that, um, and community members that we can ask for support in terms of, in terms of like these conversations. For me, the, the, I was just part of another group that also has open meeting laws attached to them. But there, there is, you know, like for the how to be together, there's also these conversations around, that we could go in executive session and just have an open, vulnerable discussion about how to be together. That is, that is a little more humane, that you can, like, we can actually, like, say what we, without, you know, being aware that we're on TV or something like that. So, um, I just did a training with a state board on inclusive bias, for example, and it was an executive session and no recording so that people could be, um, who they are and we could have like really good conversations about how to, how to, how to work together. So I think, you know, there are ways to do this work that is like humane, that takes us as humans instead of the, the, I think the open meeting law is a tool actually to be transparent to the community that we are accountable for. Um, and so I don't, I don't think that a survey violates open meeting laws. And it's, it's a step forward.
Yeah, no, I wa- I wasn't suggesting that it violates open meeting laws. I'm, I'm really asking the group, how do we want to, you know, essentially, we're talking about doing this pre-work. What do we want this to look like? How do we make this happen?
Yeah, I mean, I think we could like easily do a, a survey monkey. I mean, as long as it's not interactive, it can go into a, a document and then we can discuss it publicly. But as long as we're not editing off of each other's work, I think like a survey monkey for the board would be an easy first way to start. Libby, is that something you can have Anna send around? Just like, maybe
I would check.
we can, we can talk about it on Friday, but.
I would check with the V S B A first to see if that does violate or not, because I, I don't know if it was. So I would, I would check before doing that. But yes, we can, I mean, logistically, if it's, if it's allowable, then yeah, of course we can do that. That's, that's easy.
Jim? I also like Amanda's idea of asking the facilitator to maybe take this on as part of the work because then we don't have to worry about how to ask the questions, which questions, how to compile and report out on the data. I mean, all of that takes some time and thought and effort, so, um, maybe that's something we could include.
And another thing that that raises is would we want facilitator for both days? So facilitator might start by actually doing a lot of this work and like surveying the board and then thinking about it. It, it might be, it might be worth, it would be more money, but it might be worth having a facilitator, you know, do the second day as well. So that way they come in saying, okay, you know, I talked to all of you individually or, you know, reached out to you by email. I've got all these priorities and have them to kind of do some synthesis beforehand and, um, have a starting place of the discussion. Jill?
Yeah, and I, I want to be realistic too, that it's April 7th and I, I know that everybody is, has pretty busy full-time jobs and I really don't want to add to anybody's plate. So I'm happy to as a, as a plan B or maybe a plan A, take you up on your offer, Jim, to summarize what you heard. And if there's a way that you could share that and we could kind of react to that maybe in a survey or something like that, because that would, that would give us a pretty good head start. And I think having had that perspective and time, you could probably, you know, pull that together. And, and, and like you said, having seen some patterns and some discrepancies and I, I'm trying to be realistic about, I don't know how realistic it is to get a facilitator in a month, who could, who could do this work well for us. And I also, this might be an unpopular opinion, but it's occurring to me, if we only have three hours each day, sometimes that can get eaten up a lot by facilitation. And I, I want to make sure we all have a lot of time to actually talk to each other and it might get messy and you know, we're only human and we might get tired and we might have to sort of self-police, but it might be more realistic than hiring a facilitator who could come on board and prepare. So I just want you, I'm very, I'm happy with whatever we can end up doing, but I think realistically I'm fine. If, if that's what we can do, then that's what we can do. And I'm, I'm willing to be grown up about it.
Great, no, thanks Jill. That's super, super helpful. And I may, I want, regardless of what you do, I definitely want to subrise and having some help, help there would be helpful. I have, I have the pile of notes. I just haven't gotten to the synthesis part of it. Amanda, is that an old hand or?
It's always an old, and I'm getting old.
Any other, any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll talk, I'll look at kind of whether we could do some sort of survey. We'll do a little more investigation on a, on a facilitator. I totally hear you, Jill. And I think that's why like having the right facilitator who's gonna be able to, you know, kind of, I think, get quickly to, to where we need to go rather than spending, you know, an hour on a kind of, you know, icebreaker exercise or something, which I know can happen, would be important. And why don't we just do another kind of update? And, you know, if we can do a survey, we'll, you know, try to work on that between now, but we meet in a week because of spring break. So let's do another check-in on this next week with, you know, and kind of see where we're at. But it sounds like directionally relatively on course and it's just kind of making sure we get the, the pre-work done correctly. All right, excellent. Next on the list is executive session. And I've lost my agenda. I don't know how that happened. But that's all this is executive session and it's for the purpose of negotiations. So we need the magic words. If someone can approximate emotion within those in, that would be fantastic. Mia, it looks like she's going to bravely, was that a brave raise of your hand?
Jill's ready to go. I don't want to steal her thunder.
Okay, Jill.
Oh, no, go for it. I was going to plagiarize from Anna's memo that she sent.
Oh, I was going to do.
I think that's, that's the right, the right lingo.
Let's see. So I, I moved to find that premature general public knowledge regarding our negotiations contracts that place the board at a substantial disadvantage if the board discusses the negotiations in public.
I say from there?
Annika?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Mia?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Amanda?
Yes.
And Emma?
Hi.
Now, most should actually go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Annika?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Mia?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Amanda?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Great. So. So moved.
Second.
Mia?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Kristin?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Annika?
Hi.
Andrew?
Hi.
Amanda?
Hi.
Emma?
Hi.
Good. See you all next week. Thanks a lot. Bye.